Good evening. Welcome to the Windsor Board of Education meeting of Wednesday, February 21st. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Next order of business is recognitions and acknowledgements. And I know we have a new Board of Ed student representative, so Dr. Hill and proper Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to call Principal Brian Parker forward to introduce our new Board of Ed student rep.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so first and foremost, I wanted to give a public thank you to Timothy Hoagland, who was our Semester One rep, did an amazing job representing our students over at Windsor High School. And so now, I get the pleasure to introduce Ms. Sophia Di Felici. We are so fortunate to have her. She actually transferred to Windsor at the tail end of her freshman year. And at the outset, you know, she made it really, you know, quite an impact on not only the students, but the staff at Windsor High School with her kindness, amazing academic prowess, and passion for learning. It was pretty evident early. Sophia is a top-ranked student in the class of 2024. No, you're not getting any more than that. Sophia's dedication to her studies is readily apparent, as summarized by one of her English teachers, Ms. Narcois, who stated, "Since freshman year, Sophia has demonstrated such enthusiasm when it comes to learning. She has always approached new readings and class discourse with an open mind and a critical lens. Sophia has an exceptional work ethic, which she has shown through both independent study and small group collaboration. Sophia is an active member of the WHS Drama Club, a member of Family, Community, Career Leaders of America, also known as FCCLA, National Honor Society, Roca, National Honor Society, Social Studies Honor Society, and Spanish Honor Society. Sophia's former Spanish teacher, Ms. Armillo, exclaims that Sophia is a kind and caring person. She is always willing to lend a hand with a positive attitude and a smile. She's intelligent and hardworking. She's always inquisitive and has high interest in learning. In the community, Sophia has volunteered at the Windsor Public Library and has provided one-on-one tutoring at the Wilson Branch Library. This past summer, Sophia interned at the Windsor Discovery Center and Montessori School, working with infants, toddlers, and children up to the age of five years old. This sparked Sophia's interest in becoming an educator herself, either in elementary or high school English. So following graduation, Sophia is interested in attending the University of Connecticut. And I personally look forward to welcoming her back to teaching Windsor Public Schools at some point after she follows her studies in education. Members of the board, we are proud to present to you Sophia Di Felici as our Semester Two Student Representative for Windsor High School.
Next item on the agenda is Audience to Visitor. Ms. Daly, if you could read our script.
Good evening. This is Robin Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q&amp;A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own, and no comments will be made by the board at this time.
Rules here that for those in attendance in the audience in speaking at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, if you're still speaking, Ms. Taylor will raise a red card briefly, and at the three-minute mark, she'll hold it up and keep it up. And at that point, please try to finish up your remarks. For people who might be online or calling in, if they don't see the red card, especially if they're on a phone, Ms. Taylor will have to interrupt you at the three-minute mark. So at this point, is there anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the board tonight? How about anybody online? A hand raised?
There are attendees, but there are no hands raised, and there are no comments in the Q&amp;A.
Okay, without objection, I'd like to close Audience to Visitor. Audience to visitors closed. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Before we start going through, are there any items that folks want to have pulled? Not seeing any, then Ms. Taylor, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda items for A, Financial Report, for B, Enrollment Report, for C, Food Service Report, and for D, Human Resources Report.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Assuming that there is no discussion, since nobody wants anything pulled. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries nine zero zero. Next is the Approval of Minutes. Is there a motion? Yes, yes, sorry. Good point. Is any item that wants to be pulled from the minutes?
No.
Okay.
The Board of Education approved the minutes from the January 17th, 2024 Regular Meeting, January 23rd, 2024 Public Forum with Finance Committee Meeting, January 30th, 2024 Public Forum with Finance Committee Meeting, and the February 6th, 2024 Public Forum with Finance Committee Meeting.
Is there a second? Motion made by Mr. Lockhart for the approval of minutes, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions, motion carries nine zero zero. Next item, Student Representative Report.
Oh, thank you. I just want to say before I start, thank you for letting me have this opportunity to represent the students of Windsor High School. So first off, I just want to say Happy Black History Month, it's February. And to start off, Windsor High School has a Black History Month performance presenting the choir, band, and orchestra. We also have some students who will be performing dance steps, drill team, and spoken presentations on February 28th during school at Windsor High School. And this will all be livestreamed on the Dep Hub. And I also want to highlight the Black Excellence Club, who has, who have been doing, who have been celebrating Black History Month with morning trivia, and will be hosting a youth arts showcase on February 23rd, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Windsor High School Library. And I want to say thank you for our art department for helping make a mural for the JFK of their mascot, the eagle, and is in preparation for the art show happening in May. The Student Council is in process of making plans for the indoor winter carnival fundraiser that will be held in March. We also have the Classes of 2024 and Class of 2025, both making preparations for prom as the time is nearing. Our JROTC will be having a field trip going to the New England Museum at the end of this month. And for our athletics, we have a lot for our athletics. So bear with me. We have our boys diving, who are competing in the CCCs on February 28th at 3:45 p.m. And our boys swimming on February 29th at 4:15 p.m. Both events will be held at Glastonbury High School. Our girls' basketball will be competing in the CCC Championships tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. at the University of Hartford against the Northwest Catholic. After that, they will begin their CIAC Class L Tournament run. Boys' basketball will be starting their CCC Tournament tomorrow night at 5:00 p.m. against ROM at Windsor High School. And this past weekend, the wrestling team competed in the CIAC Class L Divisional Championship at Wilton High School. Our girls' indoor track and field team won their ninth consecutive CIAC Class L State Championships. And our boys' indoor track and field team won the state open meet. They will now continue on to New England's and Nationals. And our Unified Basketball Team is hosting the CCC Championship at Windsor High School this coming March. And last but not least, we have our spring sports, which are starting up. And our boys' volleyball team did some fundraising last week for some new uniforms and equipment.
Thank you so much. Any questions for our new representative? Okay. Thank you so much for being up.
One question over there.
Sorry, Nathan.
Yeah, I was just saying, welcome, amazing report. Happy to have you here, and I love to see the excitement. You're very welcome.
And to let you know too, Nathan is the other, I know you met Ms. Taylor before. Nathan is the other representative for Windsor High School.
So I'll be looking forward to working with you in conjunction to the student reps that we have on the SGC, just to see what you guys would like to put forth or how best we can assist you in doing what you guys feel needs to be done.
And Mr. Wallaston is also a Windsor High School grad.
Yes, I am also. Tell me more, David.
A more recent grad than some.
See, that's why you gotta stop while you're ahead, David. You gotta stop while you're ahead.
I know, because she can hit me, she can grab the mallet here. And as I mentioned before, welcome. And if you'd like to stay, but I know this is going to be a long night and with your studies and stuff, so feel free to be able to leave now or at another time. But thank you so much for your report, and we're looking forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move number eight on our agenda, the Superintendent's Report, to right after the President's Report.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor to move the Superintendent's Report, which was number eight, after the President's Report. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries nine zero zero. As to the President's Report, I can cross off, as Dr. Hill often does after many of us go, a number of items. Congratulations to many of the sport teams. Mr. Lockhart and I attended this past week a news conference held by Jeff Curry, one of the co-chairs of the State's Education Committee. And the leadership team from the Education Committee, both the other co-chair as well as ranking members were there as well. The room was packed with a number of different interest groups and students, as well as board members, some superintendents. And Mr. Lockhart spoke on behalf of CAPE. This really had to do with a proposal by the governor to fund something that's very much needed, which is early childhood education, but apparently on the backs of K through 12 education. And even a speaker regarding early childhood said, some friends of mine said, "You should be glad that Governor's going to give you this extra money." And she said, "No, all of this is important, all this work, and we don't want it on the backs of K through 12." So this was a good opportunity for us to hear of many other interested groups in a little pushback here. We understand there are certain guardrails that are up regarding spending. But I think there's, knowing the loss of ESER funds around the state, knowing the demands of special education funding, that there is a need to do some pushback here. So again, that was a good opportunity. And Mr. Lockhart, myself, Dr. Hill, and Dr. Haiti were at the Capitol again today in connection with a legislative breakfast put on by the Hartford Area Superintendent's, CAPE, as well as CREC. And we had a couple of our representatives there, both Doug McCrory, our state senator, and Jane Garibby, one of our state reps, was there. And so good for them to hear the kinds of pressures that are being felt, you know, we feel like we're not alone, that most other boards are feeling a lot of the same kind of pressures that we're feeling as far as the budget. And again, it's been said many times, ESER funds are gone, but not the impact of COVID, both on learning loss, the mental health, and the social, emotional learning of our students. And I think every time we have that ability to be in front of our legislators to remind them, I think that's an important thing. We're all, it seemed like we were singing from the same hymnal. There's also going to be a day, another opportunity. I know many people working during the day can't make it, but it's called CAPE on the Hill. It's another opportunity to us meet with our legislators. And Mr. Lockhart is always very good of making sure that even Ms. Zawaskowski, who's no longer as part of Windsor, is always involved in our discussions. And we saw her today, and I did mention her, and I don't know if Mr. Lockhart did as well, that when we come on the CAPE on the Hill on March 13th is the day that we would like to try to meet with her as well. It's also an opportunity, last year, we took a number of students. Dr. Hill was there, as well as Mr. Lockhart, and we met with almost all of our representatives, the students from the civics class, three students from civics class attended. And when there's only, not a lot of students, they get a lot of play. And so this is their opportunity to talk about issues that affect them. I think they did mention school lunches last year as being an issue, but I don't know what all of the state can do about that other than the fact that they did not fund lunches this past year. They did do breakfast. That is my report. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February 9th, we had six Windsor High student athletes participate in Signing Day. These scholar athletes have demonstrated exceptional dedication and skill, both on and off the playing field, earning themselves a spot at prestigious colleges, which is a testament to their hard work and commitment to excellence. We'd like to congratulate the following athletes and their families. Kevin Corsi, who will be attending Bryant University for boys' swimming and diving. Chase Royal, who will be playing football for Assumption College. Damian Sparrow, who will also be playing football for Assumption. Keon Winter will be attending CCSU for football. Taishan Berry, signed with Northeastern University for track and field. And Aleah Bailey will be attending the University of the District of Columbia and will play girls' lacrosse. I'm also excited to announce the creation of an employee wellness program, the Windsor Public Schools Wellness Initiative, a product of our Windsor Public Schools Benefits Office. The Windsor Public Schools Wellness Initiative seeks to empower all staff members within the school district by creating a positive, healthy, and supportive work culture. The goal is to encompass the whole being of the employee, financial, spiritual, mental, physical, and beyond. A wellness committee has been created, and the committee is charged with the responsibility of making our workplace the best that it can be. The committee will be offering many different informational classes, different types of physical activities, and by embracing all age groups and abilities of our staff. Please see the district website to read the inaugural edition of the First District Wellness Newsletter. Please feel free to reach out to any of the committee members, Lisette Latour-Mazuski, Caitlin O'Neal, Alexis Shock, and Catherine Zager. Last Friday, I attended the National African-American Read-In at Clover Street School for Black History Month. Over 20 gentlemen from our community attended. They were treated to breakfast and then selected a book to read to the students in their assigned classroom. The faculty and staff on the district volunteered to read along with Secretary Lockhart. I'd also like to note that many of these men were members of Divine Dine, or historically African-American fraternities. And so I know they really enjoyed themselves, and I've actually extended the offer for them to make coming to read to students a more regular occurrence. So hopefully, we'll see that happen soon. Today, I participated in a panel, or just this afternoon, for CCSU's 093 program. That's for folks who are looking to become school superintendents. I was invited by the program coordinator, who's also a superintendent in South Windsor, Dr. Kate Carter. I've been a panelist for many years for her. This year, Dr. Noha Abdahady also joined as a panelist, as she's in that program. So she wasn't on my particular panel, but I know that she participated. A panel of highly regarded superintendents shared insights about the rewards and challenges of the superintendency, and also shared their experiences serving as superintendent mentors in CCSU's 093 program. So what we didn't do was, we didn't scare away all the prospective candidates. So I know folks expected us to do that, but there are rewards and challenges with any profession and the superintendency, just like any other. You're a CEO, you have lots of challenges, you have lots of rewards. But the overall message from the superintendents across the state was that make sure you understand your why before you pursue this. And I share with them something one of my drill sergeants shared with me that I've held on to for 34 years. If you're scared, say you're scared, and then do it anyway. And then lastly, my next coffee talk will be held on Tuesday, February 27th, at 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom at LPW. Immediately following, the Office of Family and Community Partnerships will be hosting a discussion on raising children in the digital age facilitated by our own Dr. Michael Mallory. Dinner and childcare will be available, please RSVP on the district website. And that is Superintendent's Report. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Cantor?
I just have a quick question for you. How many students have you mentored being a superintendent? Have you had that opportunity yet?
Superintendent candidate students?
Yes.
So two. I held off. I've been on the panel for years, but two officially. So I have one, obviously, this year, Dr. Edson. But unofficially, quite a bit. Been mentoring administrators across the state for a long time. Even ones I don't know I'm mentoring, they tell me I am. You're my mentor, oh, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda has to do with the design plan for Oliver Ellsworth Humidity Mitigation by Van Zelm Engineers. Ms. Batshelder, I don't know if you want to introduce this anymore. Your name happened to be a period here.
Sure, so.
Over here.
There you go. If you can please come up to that chair and table. I know you've, as everyone knows, we are doing an HVAC project at Oliver Ellsworth this summer. And they have presented often at PBC, but some of those times often conflict with our board meetings. So it was asked if you would come and present to the board so they could have a full understanding of what you've presented at the PBC thus far.
Sure thing. Thank you. Thanks. So I'll give a quick overview of the work that we did and what we encountered at the Oliver Ellsworth School, and then I'll open it up to any questions and comments you have. I will say I had a rather lengthy discussion with Paul today. He gave us, he gave me a nice, long list of questions, and we addressed some of those because they were far more detailed than what we would want to review with the entire board today. So we went through a lot of stuff, and I can address any, I can spend as much or a little time as you want, but I know you all have a long agenda tonight, so I'll kind of go quickly. So a little history. We were engaged in October of '23, or October, last fall, contacted by Marco here from Facilities Group, and asked to, you know, basically take a look at some of the problems that were occurring at Ellsworth over the summer. And we got some documents, and we met with them, and we discussed the observation of mold and some of the humidity problems and some of the, you know, issues that had, you know, taken place over there. And based on that, we developed a proposal to do a study to take a look at what should be done to resolve the problem. And the goal was really to, you know, do whatever was necessary to prevent it from happening again the following summer. I guess there was a lot of negative sort of press about that, and for good reason. And we wanted to avoid it occurring again, so there was some urgency to it. So unfortunately, we were not engaged during the summer, so we couldn't really take a look at exactly what was occurring. We couldn't really analyze or instrument any of the, you know, operation during the summer. But we took a look at the drawings. We do, HVAC design is what we do. We're the largest and oldest HVAC design firm in the state. And so we have a lot of experience with this. And when we took a look at the systems, it was fairly obvious to us what the problems were, both from taking a look in the field and observing the documents and that sort of thing. And so we developed a report in October. So we got started in, we were first involved in September, got really going in October, submitted the report in middle of November. And at that point, I attended a couple of the committee meetings with the building committee, reviewed that with them, addressed any questions, and they basically endorsed that approach. And we were engaged to proceed into design. So we now have a, I have a set here, if anybody cares to look at them. This is the 100% construction documents for the work, which is going to be proceeding this summer. And I think Marco's about ready to release them for bid. So what did we find? What were the problems? You know, the mold and humidity can be a kind of a complex issue to diagnose. And, you know, in this case, we felt very confident that we understood what was happening. But basically, there was mold on numerous surfaces in the building. And so the first question is, you know, why does mold grow? Why does mold occur? Mold will typically occur on porous surfaces that are exposed to relative humidities above about 60% RH for some extended period of time. So we know that in the HVAC world, and our goal in designing these systems is to keep the relative humidity in air-conditioned buildings in the 50% to 55% RH range. And we do that through a variety of measures, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So the way that, you know, so we know that- So the way that, you know, so we know that the humidity was, had to be high in order for the mold to occur. So we took a look at how the systems operated and, and, you know, what the, what the issues were that might promote those, you know, elevated humidity levels. And there are several sources of humidity in buildings. One is the people in the building. We all breathe humidity out. There's internal, what we call internal gains. There is infiltration, that is air coming in through the envelope of the building, leaky windows, leaky walls. That can happen if the building is negatively pressurized, if there's more exhaust happening than supply, that draws that air in through the envelope. It can also happen due to wind or something like that, if, you know, if the envelope is particularly leaky. It can come in through the ventilation systems. The HVAC systems are designed to bring outside air in and deliver it to the, to the spaces in order to keep the indoor air quality acceptable. And when that outside air is brought in, it needs to be tempered and brought to the right conditions in the space to prevent elevated humidity levels. And finally, it can come up through, through the floor. This is, a lot of these buildings have slab-on-grade. You can be exposed to moisture, and that moisture can come up through the floor. So we were engaged to look at the HVAC piece of it, and separate consultants were engaged to look at the envelope and to do some testing on the floor slabs. And we found that the envelope, it is, the building was built in 1970, and it's, you know, it's not a, a great envelope by today's standards, by any means. But, but it wasn't the primary contributing factor. Testing on the floor indicated, you know, moderately elevated humidity levels, but it also wasn't really, you know, a smoking gun. So, you know, the problem, as we analyzed, it was really twofold. One, the building was operating under a substantial negative pressure. There was far more exhaust taking place than, than supply, and that was bringing a lot of unconditioned air directly into the space throughout the summer. We didn't observe that because we weren't here during the summer, but, and by the time we had gotten involved, they had taken some, you know, some measures to, to reduce that negative pressure. But that's what we understood from people, and even when we got involved in the fall, it was still under a negative pressure, even after they had shut off some of the exhaust fans and made some changes and stuff. So that was definitely a contributing factor. The other one is the nature of that building. So the way we deal with ventilation and cooling, dehumidifying outside air, you have to bring outside air in from the outside. Warm air can, can accommodate more moisture than cool air. So humid air during the summer has a lot of moisture in it. If you bring it in and you cool it down, the relative humidity increases. So if you're going to bring eighty-five, ninety-degree humid air into a building and bring it down to seventy degrees, you have to cool it below its dew point to remove that moisture. You have to, you have to dehumidify, you have to remove the moisture from the air. You do that by cooling it all the way down to about fifty or fifty-five degrees. Below its dew point, the moisture falls out in a cooling coil, and then it warms back up to the space temperature of seventy-five or something like that. The problem is, the cooling coil in these units responds to the space temperature. So if the space temperature says, I want to be seventy-five, and it's seventy-five, it's not going to circulate the cooling fluid through the coil, and it's not going to dehumidify the, the outside air. And that's what was happening. A lot of times, if you're in a school that has high solar loads, it has a lot of windows, the sun comes in, it warms the room up, the cooling coil says, I need to cool the room to keep it cool, and you get dehumidification inherently. The Oliver Ellsworth School doesn't have a lot of exterior windows. It's only got these kind of smaller, high-clerestory windows. And during the summer, it's somewhat unoccupied. There aren't a lot of people, the lights aren't on, but the outside air is being brought in, and it's not being adequately dehumidified. It uses a system we call unit ventilators. It was a very common system applied to schools back in the seventies when, when the school was built, and it's not a system that is really used much anymore. There's, there's a lot of problems with it. I won't go into all the details. But basically, it's an individual air handling unit for every classroom. It brings in outside air, it provides heating and cooling, and it controls the outside air. It's got a lot of stuff in a really small box, and it doesn't do a very good job. So there was an HVAC upgrade in the school done about six or seven years ago, and it was basically a one-for-one replacement. So what you got was new equipment. Equipment's all pretty new and in, in good shape, but it's basically, you know, a redo of a nineteen-seventies technology that we don't really use anymore. When we do new schools, we use systems that we call dedicated outdoor air systems, DOAS. And what they do is bring outside air in, and they take that outside air and run it through a heat exchanger, and they do the exhaust at, at the same unit. So it takes the air being exhausted, and it used, it uses the heat from that air to preheat or precool the incoming air. So it dramatically reduces the energy use, and it pretreats that air, dehumidifying it in the summer or humidifying and, and warming it in the winter. And then we provide some additional cooling for dehumidification, and it addresses that humidity, which the primary source of humidity in a, in a space is that outside air. So it addresses dehumidification of that outside air directly, brings it down to the proper conditions, and then delivers it to the spaces. So what we proposed was to essentially keep all the systems just the way they are and add a dedicated outside air system, which will bring in the proper amount of fresh air to all these classrooms. It'll properly filter it, it'll properly condition it, deliver it to the air and, deliver it to the classrooms in proper quantities, and dehumidify, heat it or cool it as needed, and properly filter it to improve the indoor air quality. So, you know, the, the challenge that, and that's the way we would do a new school, basically. So we would cap the outside air connections at the unit ventilators, and then we are delivering outside air via this dedicated outside air system to each one of the unit ventilators in, in all of the classrooms. And the challenge was physically to make this happen in a school that wasn't designed to accept these kind of systems. So we came up with what we feel was a, was a very nice solution, you know. In, in a new school, we would probably put rooftop units in and run the ductwork down the corridors or whatever, but schools that were not designed to have that ductwork don't have room in the corridors. So we were able to kind of put the units on the roof, run a limited amount of rooftop ductwork, and then punch in through the walls of the kind of clerestory areas that exist at the Ellsworth School, and then get into these, it's kind of hard to describe, but get into these spaces in order to deliver the air directly to the, to the classrooms. So that was the approach we took there. We feel very confident that it's going to address, address the problem, and that it will substantially reduce the energy use in the building, because the, the biggest energy load in a building like this is the ventilation air, and this will reduce it by about seventy-five percent. So, so it's a good, it's a good energy conservation feature as well. That was the bulk of the building, which is classrooms. We also addressed the, the gymnasium and the cafeteria areas, which were operating in a somewhat uncontrolled fashion, so there was a lot of exhaust taking place that was influencing the rest of the building, creating that negative pressure. We're converting the kitchen exhaust hood to what we call variable volume. It's actually some controls that look at the smoke and heat coming off the, the cooking surface, and it ramps the exhaust quantity up or down as required to, to satisfy the proper exhaust. So it, it reduces its, reduces the exhaust substantially when there's not a lot of activity going on in the kitchen. So that's an energy-saving thing, and it also will reduce the negative pressure in the building. And we're providing some, what we call reheat. So when you cool all that air down to remove its moisture, if you're overcooling it, you may have to provide, under certain conditions, a little bit of additional heating to heat it back up so you don't overcool the spaces. So we're doing that in the, in the gymnasium, in the cafeteria, and, and in these DOAS units, there is a reheat. We don't like to use reheat if we don't need to, because it's a, it's kind of a waste of energy. So we're putting controls in place to minimize that reheat to only the times when it's, when it's specifically required. So, so I think that is an over, it's probably a lot to digest for everybody, but that's probably an overview of what we're doing, and happy to accept any questions.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight, and also thank you for coming to the town council and our PBC meetings and...
Problem.
And being there, because this has been an important issue for everybody in, in Windsor, really, more than just the board and, and our school. So thank you very much. And as far as questions go...
Well, I know Paul's got a lot of questions, so if I could go before him...
Okay.
First, first, Ms., he's the mechanical engineer, so I want to, I want to show deference.
But first, Mr. Lockhart.
I just want to say thank you. I, I was there for the presentation. I was there when you talked about the, the actual solution, and I think I get an understanding that you understood that the envelope is very aged, and probably would have been a different solution if maybe we'd have fixed the envelope first and then worked towards a solution. So I, I understand all those dynamics. I'm, I'm glad you took all that into consideration, and I want the public to understand that they actually designed a system directly for this building. It was not something that was taken off a shelf and retrofitted. This is something in this solution that is retrofitted, I mean, excuse me, designed especially for this building to bring the direct air in so that it can help compensate for all the things that's, that the building is lacking, and to provide that level of comfort. And I want to thank Facilities. I want to thank the town council for really acting upon this and really getting ahead of this. This unit, I believe, takes, I believe, eighteen to twenty-two weeks to build from start to finish, and then trying to get it prepared so that we can have this on the building by the summer, so that when we come back to school the next academic year, realistically, barring any challenges, that this system will be ready to go, and we will not be facing the mold issues that we've been facing year over year at this particular site. So I've been walking that building a lot. Mr. Panos has walked that building a lot. The PBC meetings have been very, very informative. I find you to be credible. I find you to be very straightforward in telling, hey, this is what's going on, these are the struggles that you're having, this is what we're proposing, and you gave it to the PBC to make an educated decision, in my, in my, in my opinion. A very expensive decision, but it's a very, very well-thought-out decision. And I, and I think this Board of Ed should appreciate and at least salute that. So I thank both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions?
Uh, with questions?
Okay. Mr. Wallaston, and then probably Mr. Panos.
Yes, I was just wondering, I'm not sure if this is to Danielle, to possibly get back to her surface to this gentleman here. I was just wondering if you could tell me where in this packet we could find what you mentioned about the energy efficiency. I know we did have some complaints prior. I don't know where those complaints stand about the method we chose to take. I just don't really know. So I would want to know more about the energy efficiency of this all, so I could go back to that constituency as well.
I'd be happy to follow up with, you know, a, a call or Zoom meeting or something afterwards if people would like more detailed discussion...
Even just a one-pager?
Than we can do tonight.
Like a page in the packet?
I believe the, the report that we did in the, in the fall is included as an attachment to your meeting minute package tonight, and we have the full set of documents here. And, you know, the report kind of describes what, what that system is. It has a little diagram on it and stuff. So, and, and if people have any questions about it and how it works and that sort of thing, I'm happy to address that. I can, I can do it now. I could tell you about this heat recovery thing if you'd like. I didn't go into detail on, on how it works, so...
It's all right. You don't have to get into it now. I just wanted to know where I could find it, or if we could possibly get like a, a one-sheet, or just to be able to bring back to, to the constituency and explain to them, like...
Sure.
This is, these are the, the climate benefits, if we use that word, that this system is bringing to our community.
Well, with Marco, I'd personally go there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Panos.
All right. I, I had, what, at least an hour conversation.
I'm full for a good hour today, yeah.
Yeah, how did you get off, off after an hour? I'll talk to you later about that.
We didn't hit all of the forty-one comments that Paul sent to me yesterday, and...
Yeah.
We covered most of them, so...
He did a good job, let's put it that way. You know, of course, why don't you address the issue then of why, what could have been done to the existing systems in order to make it work? And, you know, I, I think we discussed that, and, and, but if you'd go over that a little bit, what would, what effort would have been taken to, you know, the, the unit ventilator systems to actually make them dehumidify before, you know, without the problem?
The, the problem with the, with unit ventilators, and again, this gets a little bit technical, is they are constant volume typically. They deliver the same amount of air all the time, so the way that they control temperature is by, the temperature in the room is by controlling the temperature of the air being delivered to the room. So if the, if the room needs a lot of cooling, the air coming out of the unit is cold. If the room doesn't need a lot of cooling, the air coming out of the unit is warmer. It's still colder than the room, but it's warmer, right? And it's bringing this outside air in, and it's, if it doesn't need to, to deliver cold air to the room, it doesn't dehumidify that air, it doesn't pull it out. So what you really need to do is, is reheat that air, and unit ventilators don't have the capability to reheat. So converting them to variable volume would, would help. That has its own issues, but you really can't convert unit ventilators to variable volume. They're kind of packaged devices. They're not really designed for that. The, the thing that you could do, and if, you know, if, what, what really we were asked to do is provide a comprehensive, what I'll call a bomb-proof solution that's going to address this problem, and you won't have to worry about it in the future. And I think that's what we provided. There are things that can be done. For example, you could put occupancy sensors in the rooms that would close the outside air damper when nobody was in the room. That way, you wouldn't be bringing all that moist air in when the, you know, when the, when there's nobody in the room and you're not required to ventilate, you know. So there are, there are things like that, that, that you can do, which aren't in place now. So right now, whenever they're running, they run all day long, they're bringing outside air in all the time, and, and if there isn't a cooling load, they're not dehumidifying it. So there are things like, like that, that you can do to provide, you know, to bring less outside air in. But you, you can't easily make them dehumidify properly because it, the constant volume systems require you to cool all the air down and then reheat it, reheat it back up. So, okay.
Thank you. What about when you have, these dedicated systems serve, each serve, what, approximately eight classrooms?
Yep.
So if a classroom, one classroom is not being used on that particular day, nor, normally that doesn't happen, but they're usually all together, but what, how, does it change, does it change the air to that particular room that's not being used, or...
It does, it does not. Now, that, that's a, it's a good point. Again, we could spend a lot of time talking about this, but sometimes, we, if we were doing a new school, we might consider doing that. And, and really, the, the ultimate solution here, if we were, budget wasn't an issue, and, you know, this was a brand-new school that wanted to be the most energy-efficient school in the country, we would do the same thing we're doing, a DOA, a dedicated outside air system, just the way we're doing it. And we might have controls on every classroom, and those controls would monitor CO2 in the classroom, and they would monitor occupancy, and they would modulate the amount of air delivered to each room in response to the carbon dioxide levels, which is an indication of how many people are in the room. And then if everybody left the room, it would just close entirely. That's a system we have done before, but it's, it's a much more complicated and costly system that we didn't feel was, was really justified here. It's going to be expensive enough. We didn't want to, and, and it doesn't, you know, it really is for schools, they want to go all the way, if they want to go to net zero, and they really have the budget to, to support that, you know. But I will say, and I, and I forgot to mention it, we talked about it today, we did, there were controls, where we really like to use these, use these carbon dioxide monitoring controls, is in spaces with highly variable occupancy. The classrooms generally have the same occupancy, and they're generally there for the same amount of time during the day, so then when everybody leaves, you just shut the unit off, you know. You don't need the complex controls. But the cafeteria and the gymnasium are spaces that have highly variable occupancy. When there's ten kids bouncing a basketball, you don't need a lot of ventilation air, but when there's a school assembly there, you need a lot of ventilation air. So that's where there are CO2 controls. There were CO2 controls installed at the time of the renovation in 2017, but they weren't functioning properly. So we made some modifications to the controls, and we want to recommission them to get them functioning properly so that, one, they, they save energy, and, two, they don't bring in excess amount of, of humidity and, and create negative pressure in the building and stuff, so...
Thank you. The heat wheels will, will take air from one side and, and push it into the, into the inlet, right? It will, it will get, or does it close the, no, it'll, there'll be some, it's normally going to the outlet, right, as they, but there, there can be some capture of, of spores from one and pass into the inlet part of it. And what do you... one and pass into the inlet part of it. What do you, would you explain the filtration system that you have to prevent the spores from entering? Again, this is a feature of a heat wheel.
Yeah, so I'll describe what the heat recovery system is. So you can imagine two air streams doing this. One is the outside air coming in, one is the exhaust going out, right? And imagine a honeycomb wheel that rotates in between the two air streams. It's made of aluminum, and it rotates between the air streams. And if it is in the winter, let's say it's the winter, the outside air is very cold, the exhaust air is relatively warm. The exhaust air is seventy degrees, the outside air is twenty degrees. There's a big temperature differential. So as that wheel rotates from one air stream to another, it's heated by the exhaust air, and then it's cooled by the incoming air. It transfers heat from the exhaust air to the incoming air. It's actually coated with what we call a desiccant, which is a material that will absorb moisture at a certain vapor pressure, release it at another. So in the summer, it serves to dehumidify that air by actually taking moisture from the outside air, delivering it to the exhaust, and exhausting it to the outside. As the air goes through this little honeycomb thing, a little bit of air gets captured as it rotates. So it's not a lot of air, but it's a little bit of air. It's typically less than one percent. And the air from that exhaust can get transferred into the air coming in. Now, for, we do a lot of different kinds of projects. We do lab buildings in places with truly contaminated exhaust. In this case, the exhaust is only the room air from the classrooms, so it's not contaminated air. So there is filtration upstream of the exhaust going into the heat wheel, and that's basically meant to keep any dust and particulate and stuff like that. But essentially, you're exhausting, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of that air is going out. A little bit gets transferred back to the intake, but what you're exhausting is the room, it's the room air that you're breathing. So it's not a contaminated air stream, you know. There is bathroom exhausts, but it's a small portion of that. And again, it's such a small portion gets transferred that, you know, what's getting exhausted from the bathroom is what you're breathing in the bathroom. So it's not like it's contaminating the air coming in. So in these kind of applications, the, what we call the cross-contamination is not a concern.
Thank you. The, do we have these ventilator systems? We have these ventilators, these unit ventilators in other schools, don't we?
Yeah, I don't know, but.
I guess that was a question for Facilities. I'm sorry, I guess. I mean, we're, I think we're adding some that look just like it, my understanding, or be something for us to check into, say. The current ventilator systems that you have, though, will still be operating?
They will operate without, they will be, their operation will be simplified, but they'll still be a, they'll still be your primary local cooling and heating source, but they won't be bringing in outside air and preconditioning the outside air. That will be done by the dedicated outside air system.
So do you expect them, are you going to make any modifications to them, or are they expected to be just on-off, you know, whatever the thing is, and just operating all day long and making?
They'll operate as needed to satisfy heating and cooling requirements in the room. They just won't have, right now, they have modulating dampers that modulate the amount of outside air coming in, and it's not a good arrangement right now. There's, I didn't mention this either. Each classroom has a dedicated exhaust, I think there's like one exhaust fan for every two classrooms or something. Those are being removed. We're going to remove and cap those, and then the outside air we're tying in, where the outside air comes in, that's another thing, is there's louvers in these clerestory walls that are, that's where the outside air comes in, and they're very close to the roof. So they get water off the roof, and that doesn't help with mold and everything else, too. So those are being capped, and they're no longer going to be used. And we're taking the dedicated outside air, tying it into those ducts, and then it's being delivered to the, to the unit. But the units will, they'll operate for cooling and heating, but that's, they'll be more like what we call a fan coil unit, which is just a simple fan and a coil. So they don't have the complexity of the modulating dampers and all the associated controls.
So the level of noise, you, right now, they are a little bit noisy as they are, and...
That's one of the reasons that we don't use unit ventilators anymore. There's a lot of reasons that they're not used anymore, but one of them is they can't meet the new, ANSI has standards for noise levels in classrooms, and you pretty much can't satisfy those with unit ventilators anymore. So, you know, we might look, it's a good question. We might look at slowing their speed down, because the cooling requirements in the unit ventilators will be, will be reduced, because we're going to be pre-tempering the outside air, so the thing doesn't need to have as much airflow in order to temper the, cool the outside air. So it may be possible to slow them down, and that would, that would quiet them down, too.
Okay.
We'll look into that. That's a good, that's a good point.
Well, so the system that you have now, is it going to make much noise when it brings in, like this racket and this, this system? But, you know, how much additional noise will come?
There'll be no, basically no additional noise. Yeah. These units are somewhat remote, and by the time the air is delivered to the, to the unit ventilator, there won't be any additional noise associated with it.
Okay. Well, you know, what about warranties, guarantees, things of this nature? How will we know that the system has checked out for the extreme conditions of, let's say, ninety-five degrees and ninety percent relative humidity? What would be?
Yeah, that's actually, we talked about that today, but that was something I wanted to talk with Marco about, is we always advocate for commissioning these systems, and I don't know whether you have considered, you know, getting a dedicated commissioning agent on board. But we put requirements into specification for the contractor to check out, you know, make sure everything is working properly. And, you know, in a perfect world, that works fine. It doesn't always work fine, so having an independent commissioning agent who would supervise the operation and assure that the system is functioning properly is a good thing to do. And that's something, you know, there's an additional cost associated with that, but we find many, you know, many, many schools and other institutions are doing that now. So that's something we can talk about.
Yeah, yeah. Whenever you add a large new system, it's going to have its own, you know, it's going to shake down problems, and we have to find out what they are.
That is a service that the office provides. We could, we could do that, but a lot of people will want an independent third party to do that, and we're happy to do it either way. We can do it ourselves, or we could do it with, you know, work with a third party on it.
Okay. And the, but the warranties are typical one-year, is what you say?
Yeah, so the equipment, most equipment comes with a one-year warranty. We, and that warranty from the manufacturer usually will be from time of startup, and they usually start it up before the job is complete. But what the specifications require is a one-year warranty on everything in the building from the date of substantial completion, meaning when the town has accepted it, everything, even if the air handling units only have a one-year warranty, they've been using them for six months, you need a one-year warranty from the substantial completion. Now, you can get longer warranties on certain equipment. I don't know what the, what did we get?
Eighteen-month standard.
Eighteen months. So for the units, yeah, so we did preorder the units because they have a long lead time. We needed to get them in place for the summer, and looks like they have an eighteen-month more. I couldn't remember.
So, so was this, you know, like, if we end up with a cool, dry summer, this summer, you won't be able to test the extremes of the system. So, you know, we'd have to carry that on to another year or something, that's it?
Yeah, I mean, even in a cool, dry summer, you get some occasional warm.
Yeah.
This was a really extended, warm, wet. But, you know, you do get these design days in, you know, pretty much any summer that you can, you can kind of test it on a...
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to set up and test, or, well, you know.
We can. That's part of the commission. If, you know, if you say, hey, I want my commissioning agent to conduct a test on a hot, humid day, then, you know, we just schedule it that way, and we do that pretty regularly.
And address the issue of additional weight. You have putting these fans in these units, six of them, on top of the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the building steel and cross members are able to take this easily?
Structural engineer, and they have designed some supplementary steel to, they're not that heavy, you know, they're not that big units.
Yeah, what is it, one and a half ton, or?
What's that?
Is it a ton, ten and a half?
It was, it was less than that, I think. But, but we did, we do have structural plans in this set, so we have a structural engineer who did a set of plans to reinforce, you know, the existing structure as needed to support the new, the new units. So that's included in this package.
Okay. Well, I think I'm satisfied that this is a pretty good system, and that, and we discussed the problems with the existing ones, and it would be a lot of work to modify them to work well. I mean, it would cause a complete redesign of the unit ventilators in the classroom. It'd probably take up more.
Yeah, I mean, you're really, unit ventilators just aren't designed to do this. And the school suffers, I mean, there's tons of unit ventilators out there all over the world, and they don't all have mold problems. So this school suffers from the fact that it doesn't have a lot of solar load, doesn't have a lot of windows that bring the sun shine in and heat the room up, and then cause the thing to, you know, to basically dehumidify on its own. But inherently, these unit ventilators, they just, over time, the controls don't work right, the dampers don't modulate right, they're just, they're just always problematic, so.
So would you recommend that we look at the other schools that have these unit ventilators and check out to see if we're, we might have similar problems, especially if we're putting anything new in, I don't know, or replacing anything, Sage Park or whatever?
Yeah, the problem is, you know, when you have a school designed for unit ventilators, you're kind of stuck with unit ventilators. It's not an easy thing to, and in this school, they were just replaced, you know, six years ago. So, you know, we, what we're doing at this school is basically taking the unit ventilators and converting them into the kind of system we would use in a new building. You know, we're doing, you know, a new high school for Norwalk now. It's got the same dedicated outside air systems, and it's got local heating, cooling systems in the room. They just, they're not unit ventilators. They're, they're, you know, what we would call a fan coil unit, basically, so.
Yeah, strange that they wouldn't have modified their designs by two thousand and eighteen to, you know.
It would be one more layer of complexity on an already complex box. And, you know, the, a lot of the issues with, you know, humidity and/or air quality, the other thing I didn't, I didn't mention is the filters in these unit ventilators are very poor. They're junk, basically. So they don't do a good job of filtering the outside air, and there's tons of these filters all over the building that the maintenance guys got to go, you know, to forty classrooms and change them all. And they just, they don't do a good job of filtering and conditioning the outside air. That's something the new unit will. They'll have very high-quality filters, and it'll pre-filter that outside air before bringing it in, so.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. Can you tell me how many years you've been working with this type of system that you're installing at Oliver Ellsworth on the roof?
So, dedicated, so there's been a bit of an evolution in the HVAC industry, and I've been doing it for forty-two years now, so I've been at it a little while. So, but we, the term dedicated outside air systems has come about maybe in the last fifteen years. And we used to mostly do what we call VAV, variable air volume systems, which are central systems that distribute, they recirculate the air, distribute it out, and they vary the volume delivered to spaces individually. A lot of schools are done that way, too. But, you know, the problem with VAV is similar to the problem with unit ventilators, is that you're trying to control two variables with the same air stream. You have an air stream that's trying to control the ventilation rate to the space, and an air stream that's trying, really three variables, the ventilation rate, the temperature, and the humidity. You're trying to do it all with one air stream. So what dedicated outside air systems do is decouple the ventilation requirements from the conditioning requirements. And we've been doing that for many years, but it was, tended to be more focused on spaces where we had to retrofit air conditioning into a building that didn't previously have it. So, you know, if you took an old building and it didn't have air conditioning, we would put fan coils in it, because they're small, and we just need to run piping around. And if you needed ventilation, we would run dedicated outside air, because the ducts are much smaller. The VAV systems, which recirculate and provide all the heating and cooling air, have much larger ducts. So we've been doing dedicated outside air systems for, you know, forty years, right? But they've come more into favor, and this gets more complicated than what I'll address, but we're doing a lot of what we call non-condensing cooling systems, where we deliver very dehumidified air, like we're going to do here, and then we circulate a warmer cooling water temperature that's above the dew point, and it allows us to do the cooling in the space and the heating without condensing, because it's above the dew point. And it gives us a lot of flexibility to use different kinds of heating, cooling equipment in the space. It eliminates the need for drainage, because all of these unit ventilator fan coils have drain pans, and they have condensate drains, and there's all problem. And those can be sources of mold and everything, too. So we're doing a lot of these non-condensing cooling systems, which need to be coupled with a dedicated outside air system. So it's become the, really, the primary way that we're designing HVAC systems today. Almost every project we do is this way.
So what's the life expense expectancy of this DOAS system that's going to be on the roof?
The system itself is, you know, there's nothing particularly special about it. The ductwork system will last, you know, indefinitely. The units are the same, pretty much, as any other rooftop air conditioning unit. They usually have a life of about twenty years or so.
And what's the insurance impact on that being on a school? I don't know. It's relatively new, nothing?
I don't think there's any, yeah. It's just like any other, you know, you have rooftop units up there now for the air conditioning, the office and stuff. It's just, it's just it got different, it's a different configuration and operating a bit differently.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Again, thanks so much for being here and all you've been doing for the last several months here since September and October. It's very much appreciated as we go forward with this and wanting to try to get this done for the, this summer for the next school year. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just reiterate, I'm available for any questions, any issues that come up. I just direct them through Marco, and he can get in touch with me, and we can, you know, we can follow up as needed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thank you. And we also, we do have these plans available. They'll be going out the bid, and again, you can, if anybody wants to look at them, you can get them through Marco.
Yeah, I think, I think I will.
Yeah?
Without objection, let's ask for a ten-minute recess, so we can digest what your proposals.
Oh, thank you.
Just getting it now.
Yeah.
No objection?
No.
No?
At this point, without objection from the board, I'm going to ask for a ten-minute recess before we delve into the budget matters. Without objection, we're recessing at eight fourteen, be back in at eight twenty-four. Oh, sorry, eight twenty-five, just changed.
In the green packet. And with certain modifications to it, which we think would, it would be better to serve. It brings it down to a 3.52% increase. And part of this is to recognize that we're facing a severe budget season. And it's best to come in with something less than what you would normally come in with. I think it would gain more support. If you have a 3.5% increase, I think that you would be able to keep, you'd be able to meet your contractual obligations. But of course, we all, no one likes to talk about cutting. But these are, these show the areas where we would say you ought to begin with and make, and make the cuts that would bring you down to about a 3, 3.5%, which we think has a chance of passing. You know, even, you'd have to have some support for this. And it's best to have all of us come together in order to get the support for it. So it's in that spirit. Now, I'm proposing 3.5, and these are my, or our preferences. You'll, you'll see here that we have, you know, some of this, some of these cuts, for example, I make with, with a kind of a sad feeling here. For example, ROTC at the high school. I don't know why that isn't grant-supported. You see that it's fully on, on the budget. So, you know, I'm kind of sorry about that. But that was one of those that was, that was in the 4% reduction Dr. Hill suggested if he had to go to a 4%, excuse me, a 4% increase down from his 6.4%. There are challenge teachers that are added to this. Dr. Hill had, in his 4% increase, he, he would remove all four. We would rather just remove the lower grade one and keep, keep the challenge at the, at the middle school. Now, you know, I, I'm just looking at, I, as you, as you see here, I have added a VP at the Windsor High School to, to be removed. And I, you know, I put a typical estimate for what it would be. We had the, now, the other, I know is going to be a sad story here, is the SEL coordinators who take out some. We might as well take them all. And that's, that's in here as another area. That's $360,000, estimating based upon some salaries that I saw from last year at $40,000 each. I'm not sure that that is accurate. And then we had some general grade six Sage Park, one from there. And then one FTE from Clover, JFK, and two FTEs from Windsor High School without specifying where these are, these are nor, these, these are additional cuts. And then the tutoring, Dr. Hill had asked for $200,000. He said it would reduce by $200,000. I, I only put $100,000 for that. It was four, four, oh, I had an area that was, there was another area. Four, four tutors for $135,000. And then the general category of dues and fees for the Board of Ed Superintendent. I just, I feel that we ought to feel the pain too if there's going to be reductions. So that's just a small item, $15,000. And the rest are similar. For example, rest of the cuts are similar to what Dr. Hill had put in his 4% redu, 4% solution here, 4% increase. One FTE library media specialist at the high school, the reading program pilot for $100,000. And one FTEP phys ed health teacher. That would, then, let's see, I see here. Let's see here. Well, I think I made a mistake there. That was, it's not supposed to be $100,000. It's supposed to be $75,000. I'm sorry. Okay. So the whole figure is going to go up by that much. It's going to probably be 3.55. But the adult ed program, of course, is part of it. It's, it gets removed quite a bit. So as you can see, there's two areas. So there is, you know, sadly, we have to do something. Those are our suggestions. So I, I think, you know, you can pick it apart. But I would suggest that we have to come down from 6.4 to something that is far more, that would be far more palatable to the general public and to the, to the town council. Otherwise, it, it just risks going all the way. You know, anybody who's been through these things before knows that, you know, once you, once you get the taxpayers riled up, it doesn't go away. So that's, those are the reasons why I propose that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms., Ms. Taylor?
Good evening. Thank you for this. But I want to speak to a few things. I'm speaking on behalf of my caucus. We support the, the budget as presented by the superintendent because of the value of what was, the value of our children's education. Yes, Dr. Hill did present us with alternative budgets per our request. He, we asked for 1% up. We asked for 1% down. And someone from your caucus asked for 4%. This is less than 4%. So I just want to speak to it. As an HR professional, you know, my professional opinion, when I'm thinking about morale and culture and climate in, you know, in the workplace, when you remove people from your daily, you know, to do your daily job, the weight gets distributed throughout the building, throughout the office, throughout the classroom. And the response to that could be detrimental to the mental health of our, our educators. The strides that we're making in the areas such as social emotional learning and our, our test scores, when you factor in COVID slide, when you factor in all the things that our kiddos and our professionals in our buildings have gone through since going through the pandemic, it, it just goes without saying all of the strides that we've been able to make, even though we understand that the COVID slide educationally is there and of course, our, our children's mental health. Cuts will not help outcomes. Completely removing SEL from our viewpoint is out of the question. Yes, we are all going into hard times. We're sitting in hard times currently, right? But when you think about removing something like social emotional learning from children who are making their way back into the classroom, they're, they're navigating and trying to get through all the things that they have to go through. And then on top of that, we're asking them to learn. We're asking them to, to grow. We're asking them to be the, the amazing kids that we know that they can be. It's going to take some doing. This, this proposed budget, this revised, okay, you named it Republican Revised Proposed Budget. It is a result, it results in over 30 cuts, 30 FTE cuts. That's, that's a layoff of over 30 people. We cannot talk about hard times and then lay people off. We cannot talk about hard times and have parents not be able to put food on their table. We cannot talk about hard times and someone no longer has a job. Our educators are parents. They are homeowners. And, and from what I, the research I did in at least the last 10 years, there have never been layoffs in, for Windsor Public Schools. When we're thinking about equity, everyone should feel the pinch. I, I don't, I don't disagree. There's a lot going on. We know revale is, is looming. We know that we got to talk about all the things. However, to not do all that we can from our seats and put it forward to the town council to do what they need to do would be irresponsible. To suggest that we no longer be members of CAEB, the entity that is fighting the good fight down at the LOB, making sure that the town of Windsor, amongst all other participating towns and municipalities, get the leg up on this thing called education, including funding, would be irresponsible. Again, when we are thinking about sharing the, the pinch and, and the strain and all of the things and, and when you think about equity, we do have to make some, some adjustments. From our standpoint, we would like the budget to be 15%. We, some of us would like to go up 1%, as was shared by Dr. Hill. However, we know that that might not be what's best for everyone. So we stand behind the budget that was put forth by Dr. Hill for all the reasons that I just shared and more. But for me personally, this is me speaking as vice chair, laying 33 people off is crazy. I cannot stand behind that. I cannot stand behind that. So that's all I have to say at this point. I know we'll share more. But from our caucus standpoint, to let someone go that that was their job prior to COVID, I can't stand behind that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address, to discuss the proposal? Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Decisions must be made judiciously. This is a taxpayerism. And I bring forth my constituents' requests, which are fiscally responsible for all residents and students. Inflation has increased over the past three years tremendously. These SRA-funded positions were temporary. And I believe that a lot of the SEL positions can be taught by teachers. Teachers are licensed by the state of Connecticut. Also, teachers have certifications. Teachers can teach the social emotional learning to students as they are already professionally trained. Windsor Public Schools must employ 10 full-time nurses. Right now, the students are vulnerable. Registered nurses are vulnerable. They could lose their license. A child could die. And I don't want to see that happen. I believe they're walking a fine line. As I'm a registered nurse, I know what standard of care and safe care is. So I support having 10 nurses. And I believe that we can work together and lower that percentage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Wallaston?
Yeah, I'll just take this opportunity to speak very candidly. Okay. So the first thing that kind of stuck out to me when looking at this revised proposed budget was really the audacity to, you got the VPs in the room, bro. Like, you know, like you're telling people in this room that one of them don't deserve to be here. I feel like that's very disrespectful at the least. I, I just don't even, I don't understand the audacity to even propose that one of them should be fired. But beside, besides the, this revised proposed budget, I'd just like to take the opportunity to say that this work is really a community work. It's not something that we as a board can do on our own. As it was mentioned, over 30 positions have been just proposed on the chopping block so we can fit a better number. That makes every job in here just that much harder. Every job that sits in this room makes it that much harder. So when we come and we propose a budget and when we come and we have these conversations and you guys sit up at the table and we ask you what you need and, and what's needed, we have to have that open communication. We have to have that conversation so we can help, can, help you guys continue to do the work that you're doing. Because, and, and it doesn't just stop there. Because the, the budget goes out to referendum. The parents have to know. You have to tell the parents that you sat in a meeting and it was offered up. 30 jobs were offered up to be cut. 30 jobs, over 30 jobs were offered up to be cut. You have to explain this to parents because people don't oftentimes vote on these matters. And that's why we see numbers that are so low. And that's why sometimes it's so hard to pass budgets. And that's why sometimes in the past, budgets haven't been passed. So it's really a community work. It's not just our job over here. And we're going to go out there and we're going to knock doors. And we're going to bicker about what number we should finally come to on our side, though we are the majority. We're going to bicker about it. We're going to think that we should push harder. And some of us are going to think we should think more about the pockets of the community. And we're going to have to find a happy medium for that. We're going to have to find a happy, a, a, a ground for that. But at the very least, we're here to support what the, your leader decided is enough to push this community forward, to push this school community forward. So it really is, as I mentioned, a community work for us all in this room to do. We all have to speak to the parents. We're going to go out there. We're going to knock the doors. We're going to get our little flyers that our, our committee, our town committee will pay for. And we're going to hang them on doors. And we're going to say, vote yes. We're going to say, support the budget that we put forth. But it is all a community work. So we ensure that our positions stay funded. So we ensure that what the school needs, the school gets. And I would just like to end with that again. It is truly a community work. Over 30 jobs. Over 30 jobs, guys. Fearlessly, with the audacity, was just offered up. It's a community work. It truly is a community work, guys. And I'll end on that note.
Thank you. Anybody else for first, first round before I go to you? Mr. Panos? Mr. Hallack?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, obviously, nobody, as I said at our, at our last budget meeting, nobody likes cuts. You know, I'm not particularly thrilled about, I'm all, making cuts for leaders and in tough times have to make, make very, very difficult decisions. And I believe that's something that we're doing here. As far as SEL, we talked about possibly having teachers and some other staff involved in that so it doesn't completely go away. And I know it's not the perfect solution, but it's, it's something as far as, you know, you know, keeping that around and alive in our district. You know, like I said, we're facing hard times. A lot of people in our, in our community with the home evaluations and other things aren't going to be able to, to afford an increase like this. You know, it's going to be tough on a lot of families, a lot of working families, you know. And talking to some of my constituents, you know, I, I feel like we, like every year, we keep raising the budget. And we're, we're one on, you know, being an alliance district, we're one of the 33 districts at the bottom of our state right now. And it's, it's just not, it's not a working, you know, just keep throwing money at it. So, you know, I'm going to support, I'm going to support the reductions we have at this point. I, I know it's not perfect. But it's, you know, I, I think we got to, we got to think about, about the community and a whole, as a whole, and working families and, you know, making sure, sure that we keep everybody here in Windsor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry. I just want to say, just on this particular budget, you know, we've been trying to make strides as a community to make our school systems better. And you're not going to do that by cutting 30 rolls, right? And then the idea that we would take something that's complicated, that's showing results, like demonstrable results like SEL, and then try to push that onto teachers who now would have to do more on top of having less positions. It, it's just, it's really, I, I don't mean to be rude, but it's nonsensical. It doesn't make any sense. That's not how we can operate. You know, in marketing world, I was telling this to Diana earlier, we always say you can't cut your way to plan. You're not going to cut your way to having effective schools, right? And I think people need to understand, and this is something we can talk to the community when this goes out to vote, even at a 3.5% increase, that's still a significant tax increase for folks. And I think it's a real tough pill to tell folks to pay more taxes and lose 30 teachers. I think that's a really tough pill to swallow. So I, I hear it. I definitely agree that we can't have everything we'd want. I know we've talked about this a lot amongst ourselves. But, you know, the school system is such an important piece of our town. And if people want to keep those great, nice, new property values that we have, that means we have to have schools that reflect that. We already have some of the lowest taxes in the region. And if that's a conversation we have to have with everybody, every school system around us, the towns have 30, 40, 50% higher taxes than we do here on average. And I'm not saying that means we need to go meet those people where they are at that rate. Because obviously, I'm not that much of a tax and spend Democrat. But I think we can certainly have a real conversation about where our priorities are. And frankly, this is just, this is, this is bleak. Like, this is like dystopian levels of educational funding that I just don't think make any sense. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I love democracy. I really appreciate all the effort everyone's put into this and all the budgets. It's interesting because what's cool about having a job with no pay that nobody can fire you from except your own party is, is a lot of freedom in it. So I'm just going to be honest about my, my thoughts and, yeah, what the chips fall where they may. I'm a very happy customer of the school system. I think you guys do an outstanding job. I also happen to be, I'm going to quote Leonard. He once said that he is blessed to be in a life situation where he's able to pay more taxes if that's what needs to happen. I am blessed. I am in a life situation where I am price-inelastic when it comes to taxes, right? That's my personal situation. So you want to raise the taxes, rock on, man. Doesn't bother me a bit. The challenge is, though, we are going to have a 20 to 30% tax increase in the town. That's just reality. And because of that, we have to consider, you know, and the people who are going to hit the most are actually the ones whose property values are lower. And so it's going to be south of the Mason-Dixon line, as it were. And I also want to point out that, you know, renters pay taxes too. So sometimes we think, well, it's property owners. But, yeah, the landlord's passed it right on to your rental costs. So my concern is, as a member of the fiscally conservative party, the question becomes, you know, how do you deal with the, the fact you're going to have a 20, 30% tax increase? And the fiscally conservative party generally puts up a proposal that says, well, we'll chop the costs and we'll do what it takes to get there. And, and that's okay. That's, that's part of how democracy works. So we're putting forth that proposal. And on behalf of the people who are going to pay a 20 to 30% more in taxes and the people who, for whom 20 to 30% is a significant budget line item, I support the changes that are necessary to hit that amount. Now, I know they're brutal. 31 headcount is huge. I will tell you right now, I said it last time. Budget means headcount. It just does. It does in the corporate world. It does in schools. It's, it's just, I'm not trying to be mean or, or cold. Budget means headcount. So the fact that there's 31 headcount on here is not in any way a commentary or indictment on performance in my mind. It's the fact that we're going to hit people with a 30% tax increase. There needs to be something on the table that says, what would it take to not have a 30% tax increase in the town? I know most of that's because of the, the dry up of, of rental space and stuff like that, office space. But what would it take? And this is what it would take. Now, one of the reasons I'm a fan of getting this list of what it would take, whether it's the, the green sheets that Dr. Hill handed out or whether it's what Paul did, thank you for the great work here, is it says, what do you want? It gives you a very clear choice. Now, this body has to make that choice. We all know what the game's going to be. So I vote that we get out of here by 9:30, not midnight. But the fact is, something's going to go up to the town council. It's going to be what the Democrats propose as they have the power. And we're going to see what happens when it goes out to referendum. And when it goes out to referendum, people might be aware of this kind of alternative. But what's fascinating is to hold the number down to 3.5%, 4%, whatever, is, is, is always easy. Bah, bah, lower the number. Got it. Hard part is, what do I lose? Nobody wants to give up the services. So there's a proposal on the table. Let democracy rule. It's going to flow through or it's not. It's going to go to the town council and it's going to flow through or it's not. It's going to go to referendum and it's going to flow through or it's not. But as a member of the conservative, fiscally conservative party, I want to put a proposal on the table that says, here's what we should do. Where it's going to get voted down tonight. I'm just going to give everyone the spoiler. And, come on, guys. We all know this game works. And when it does, it's okay. We said, look, here's the alternative. Here's a legitimate alternative that a fiscally conservative position would hold. Ouch, it hurts. Yowzers, right? It has to have headcount. That's how budgets work. And that's where we are. Just my commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else first go around? Mr. Panos?
Let me just address some of the comments here. First of all, you know, this is a reality in, for those, for those, you know, I was in private sector corporation. When we go through a downturn, it was far worse than anything that a, a Board of Education ever had to, to face. I mean, we get dramatic drops in revenue. And this calls for sweeping layoffs. So this is just part of society here. And there are choices people make. There's no reason why this Board of Education or school system or anywhere should not also be able to handle those kinds of changes. I mean, we, so, you know, I, I guess I have a different experience with this. It is, I've seen far worse than this in terms of numbers and layoffs when business goes down in your corporation. And let's face the facts. This is where we get the funds to operate the public school system. Strictly speaking, the public school system does not pay taxes. You receive taxes. Everybody here in this room who's employed by Windsor Public Schools is a net recipient, not a payer. You're in, you know, because, why? Well, because it's not, it's not free market. It's, it's taxed. Tax is a forcible taking. This is the reason why it is important. You, forcible taking, you know, you know, by law is completely different than, you know, going out, you know, going down and having a, you know, dinner someplace. You can blow a thou, you know, $100 on a dinner and you can say, well, why not pay another $100 a year in taxes? You know, what's the difference? And the difference is the initiation of the use of force. That's the reason why people object to these taxes. So So I think we ought to keep that in mind. People are now facing approximately $1,000 increase. Many of these people are on fixed income, you know, by the law, they have to pay. We are, after all, as Dr. Hill has frequently said, a well endowed and fun point of view system. The reason why we are is precisely because we have the low tax rates that was just pointed out here that we have. It is, you know, it's fairly low in the area. It's currently 33. It'll probably drop to 28 after this. Otherwise, if you don't watch this and you don't keep the spending down enough and to keep the mill rate down, you end up like Hartford, which has been bankrupt. They do not have a referendum. They have no way of stopping. All you had, there's a city council which just raised the rates. They finally hit 75 mills. There's nothing they can do. What you get is, no one wants, no one productive, no productive businesses want to locate there. If they have, you know, equipment, you have a 75-mill rate, it's just impossible. And so you have to leave. This is what you're facing. If you keep the mill rate low over the long run, you will prosper. People will move in, businesses will move in, they'll put their equipment there. You will, you will be able to keep and moderate. But if you don't, like many towns around, they've just run into a fiscal wall. It's a slippery slope. The increase in rates does not give you an increase in collections. That's the problem. You can, you can go up to some degree, you can go up to, you know, a mill rate of 33, 34, 35, but at some point, you begin to see people, people where taxpayers leave. Only, for example, nonprofits take over and they presume a huge portion of your land or the property is nonprofit, they're not paying taxes. So you have to be sensitive to this, otherwise you reach a point of no return. So you say, well, how can you do? Well, we are not, after all, an employer of last resort. And we point out to you, you say that it's too many, but if you look at your, you know, your personnel report here, you'll find typically on a month here, you'll be 10 employees per month leave the system. So, you know, that's 100 a year. So this is a business with a lot of opportunity. People move around. This is something, it's unfortunate it has to go to this level, but you can say, you know, 10. However, I think it's accurate to say that we are a well-supported system. We should be able to take a one-year hiatus on this. The 6.4% is actually about, you know, probably 2.4 over. In other words, it's an increase above what is needed, you know, we have 4.4, it's two percentage points above what is needed just to the cost of doing business going forward. It's not really, it's not really a cut. So, so to characterize this as, you know, dropping that 4.4 down to 3.5 is hardly a dramatic, you know, cut. So I don't think that these comments are correct that I've heard here. I think it's time for us to bite the bullet and do this for at least one year, and then we'll be able to continue. But you can, you can do all the flyers you want. The taxpayers are going to feel the cut, and they really don't care much where this is. You can say that's, what's the difference? Well, it's just flailing. You know, I'm, I've seen these things through. I've seen the worst ones where they're in the 90s. Once you get them riled up, it goes down to zero, and that, and less, actually. So I would suggest that we take something that's intermediate here. And this is, it covers the vast majority of the increases and does just a, really just a 1% cut, is the way I look at it. It's not really a huge cut. So I would urge you, the majority members up here, to take this into consideration. Come in with something that is far more moderate and just a mild cut. So I stand by this. Now, I've given a suggested list, you know, of where you would have this 3.5% increase. The administration, of course, can make modifications and do it as they see fit with, you know, some consult, consultation. But I think that this is, it shows that this is durable, doable. You know, with regard to the specifics, you know, I see, you know, that SEL is probably useful. I don't see anything wrong with it. It's just that it's out of the ordinary for school systems. These are, SEL, or what it was, was handled by the teachers. It's just the normal way that they are, they are permitted to operate if they're given the authority. Over the years, I noticed that, you know, authority of the teachers has been reduced and substituted with vice principals and other positions. And I think that there's a different way of doing things, like just simply increasing the number of specialties. You have, for example, behavior technicians or behavior specialists, for example, something which did not exist at a time when there were far fewer behavior problems. And, you know, we keep struggling with this. I think it's obvious that over the years, the changes that have been made, that have been brought in, have resulted in many of the problems that we have. And it's just a different way, that there are different ways, and I've discussed these a little bit with you. The way you can consolidate, it is possible to have larger classroom sizes if the teachers have a reduced number of programs to, or lesson plans to provide, especially at the elementary level, then you can get a significant increase in efficiency of delivery of the instruction. You know, I don't want to go into, you know, all the details. I've had these conversations over the years, but I think the different way of doing things can achieve this and more. So it's, it would, it's probably a good way to start figuring out how we can all be far more efficient. The amount of money that we pay here is unbelievably high on a per student basis compared to many, you know, most systems throughout the world. And so I urge you that we just bite the bullet and do something here and just come in with a lower number, and hopefully we'll be able to dodge the wrath of the town council or the taxpayer. But coming in with a 6.4 in this year, I think, is itself a kind of a challenge to the taxpayer that he's not going to, not going to appreciate.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Lockhart?
Yeah, no, this is the second go around. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure I went on record stating that, Madam Vice President pretty much stated all of my feelings on this particular topic. I want to thank Mr. Panos for offering up the substitute motion for the sake of having the discussion and making sure that the public understand exactly what cuts look like and what it, to look, what it takes to make the budget ebb and flow so that we can present it to the town council. So just want to say thank you. I am not in support of said cuts. I've been very vocal. This board member has been very vocal over the past five, six years of budgets that I truly believe came in lower than I would have liked. I've been very consistent about that. I've been consistent about wanting to add stuff. I've also been consistent about wanting to take away stuff. There was one year, Mr. Panos and I agreed on technology, where we thought the technology budget was a little bit too robust, and I think we were able to find a lot of savings there. So this is an exercise that I do enjoy. It's a painful one, but on this particular piece of this motion, I'm not supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for a second go around? I'm going to speak at this point. Anybody else want to end this and also ask Dr. Hill if he wants? Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, because I wanted to just address a few things before we go to Dr. Hill and his team, because I think a few things were brought up that need to be cleared up, but I just, I just wanted to share something. We are not legally required to have a nurse at every school. I'm not saying I'm against a nurse at every school, but I just want to make it clear because I think you mentioned that we're legally bound to have that. That is incorrect. So I did notice that the Esser nurse was not cut here, so I just want to lift that, that the floating nurse was, wasn't part of the cuts, and I just wanted to just lift that. I also want to lift the fact that we are, in Windsor, underfunded educationally. I want to combat a few things that folks are saying about that we have more than enough. We actually don't. The way Windsor works, we basically have to ask for the funds, hope we get it, and make do with what we get. And when I say "we," I'm saying the collective, I'm saying Dr. Hill and his team. And honestly, you know, this book, this book right here, it's a robust list of wishes and hopes to move Windsor forward educationally for our kids. And I don't see how you can make, in the same budgetary year, say that we are behind in this, behind in that, behind in this, behind in that, but cut FTEs that help move our kiddos along. Another thing I want to also mention, we are not a corporation. We are not big business. We are not a private firm. We do not make money for the town of Windsor. We spend money by the town of Windsor to educate our students. So we cannot compare budgetary cuts from a large business to a Windsor Public Schools. We can't do that. And I'm also confused, again, how we can complain about the lack of our achievements. You know, there's folks that have been on the board, you know, for many, many years, and you can complain about the lack of our students' achievements and then want to spend mediocre amounts of money to lead to robust products and results. So I also wanted to lift that. We do not, we're not a pay-to-play district. We get a lot of offerings. Our families get a lot of offerings from Windsor Public Schools and our town. That's why I moved back here to raise my children. But I have to piggyback on what my colleague, Mr. King, stated here. Our taxes are the lowest around. I know, I sell real estate. We have the lowest taxes around. Our neighboring sister town, Bloomfield, up. South Windsor, beautiful new schools, up. And I feel because we have been underfunding not just education in town, but everything, and then sitting on millions for a rainy day fund is pouring, yet we still have to pick, 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 and do this referendum stuff every year to beg for more money to make sure that our kids have what they need to get what we promised them, what the state has promised them, which is public education. So I also want to just make sure that we are clear that if we're going to spend modestly and continue to chip away at what makes sense to move the needle forward, we're going to end up with no services. Our taxes are going to go up regardless, but you're not going to have anything on the return to show for it. So when we're thinking about what needs to be cut, when we're thinking about what makes sense, yes, like I said, equity, we all need to feel it some way, but there's other ways to go about that. And the public needs to know, if you, you know, make a ruckus or whatever you said, if that happens, what is your family going to lose in the end? Maybe you won't have a pool to take the family to over the summer. Maybe the library's closed. Maybe there's 27, 30 kids in your child's school, in your child's classroom. I bet you'll have something to say about that. So I think it's important to inform the public of what happens when you start thinking about these cuts. I'm sure right now, our students that are in the ROTC right now, the JR ROTC right now, are like, are you kidding me? I'm sure someone who's thinking about getting their GED right now is wondering, we're not going to have adult ed program? So think that through, which we have, and we're not in total agreement. There are some folks that would like to spend more. There are some folks that would like to, you know, meet in the middle. But I want us to understand, if we continue to chip away at the value add of being in the town of Windsor, it makes no sense to even be living here, because if that's the case, go somewhere else, pay a little more, and get a lot. I don't want it to be that, you know, our school buildings are crumbling, mold, whatever the case may be. Parents and people paying their tax dollars, like we all are, need to feel like they're getting something. Where's the return on the investment? And I just feel, for me, laying people off, when you're talking about financial times, how are people going to pay for their house when they have no income? Think about it. A lot of our educators live right here in town, right here in town. So I just want to put all that out there, because there's a few things that folks have mentioned, including the nurse thing, that is incorrect, but I know, President, you wanted to have Dr. Hill address some things as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cantor?
I'd like to correct your incorrect statement that you made, Ms. Taylor. Windsor Public School nurses are liable for standard of care and safe care. And if they don't provide standard of care and safe care, the school can be sued. Not only a child could be maimed or die, the nurses can lose their license, be sued, and the town can be sued. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to speak, hopefully, last here, and then I'm going to have Dr. Hill, if he'd like, to address the proposed budget, that since it's the first he's seeing this, even though he did answer a question to us, what would a budget look like if it was 1% higher, 1% lower? Mr. Madison's request, what would a 4% increase look like? Since he's seeing this for the first time, as many of us are, I'd like him, at least give him the opportunity. I'm clearly not in favor of this proposal. I agree, again, with most of the things that have been said by Ms. Taylor on our behalf. And I want to go back to, again, some of the discussions that I've seen at the legislature this week about the nature of education and where we are in Connecticut. And that is, around the country, COVID is over as a pandemic. The learning loss, the social disconnection, the mental health conditions are not over. In a perfect world, we would have done a lot of things like the town council did. And with COVID funds, for in our case called Esser funds, they bought a lot of things. Because when the money runs out, you said, okay, we knew that money was going to run out. We can't run out on our kids. We can't run out of their mental health. The Dalio Report talks about 119,000 in Connecticut of disconnected kids, many who are experiencing trauma on a daily basis. It was mentioned that, you know, we're an alliance district. Yes, cutting 30 positions doesn't help us to improve where we are. We are making great strides. I think we are moving forward. I think some of the eye-ready tests, as I've mentioned before, are showing movement. We're identifying We're identifying student by student, not just groups of students, student by student of what they need to succeed. And I agree, this may be very difficult between the town council and what our Republican counterparts have talked about being a budget year, but we've been elected to be on the Board of Education, not the town council, to support our schools and to provide the necessary funds. And I agree, there's some who want to spend more than the Dr. Hill's proposal, and I can't do that. I don't want to go beyond what the superintendent says he needs to move, continue to move our district forward. That said, look at the problem. We had an engineer here to have a mold, because of a mold problem in a school that was built in 1970. We have other schools, unfortunately, who've got problems that our PBC has identified, our Public Building Commission, has identified as being problems. And so, again, I can't support these kinds of cuts, and you are correct that we've had histories in the 90s of referendum after referendum and being cut, but I think, I think it's worth to me, education here in Windsor, and it's personal to me, having my wife been an educator here, my father-in-law been an educator here, I know people hear that all the time. That's why I ran for the Board of Education. My kids went through schools here, and I think, as Ms. Taylor also alluded to, being a real estate hat, we want people to want to come in. Maybe with taxes going up, it would be easier to sell the house if they know we have a good education system. People don't usually move to a school system that's got a bad education system if you want to raise a family. So I cannot support this. And Dr. Hill, I'd like you to have an opportunity to comment if you'd like.
So I just want to say for the community, I presented in January, and then we've had weekly meetings for three weeks following, so I don't want to repeat everything that all the board members have said. It is definitely in the board's hands. Just want to clarify some things. The Alliance, I hate that moniker, I really do. It's not really, I'm just going to keep saying to the public, because I know the public listens to soundbites and they don't know, it's not the worst 33 schools or 36 schools in the state. That's how it's sold. I've been saying since I became superintendent, without getting into the dirt, the state, when they decide to do this, pick districts based on scores at that moment, but districts that did not have students of color at an appreciable percentage were not considered at all. So there are a number of districts that we have outperformed since that time and still continue to do so, but we got to hear the Alliance District. The other side, that's the dirty side, most districts that are, you know, labeled as Alliance Districts, they don't really care to get out of it, and I don't think Windsor wants to either, as much as I was pushing for it until I realized the money situation, because you're trapped by the money. So our ECS funding would be affected immediately, so we would really be crying, for sure, and then we would lose other funds. So it's a trap. It's a trap. So I hear Mr. Halleck on that one, but I just hate hearing about Alliance District in general, Ms. Halleck, because if it goes away, then the whole board would be crying and the whole town would be crying, because we would not be in a position that we're in at all with our ECS funding staying flat and funded properly, at least that portion, where other districts across the state are struggling, and they get these variable numbers every single year. That's why organizations like CAPE, as we were at the Hill today, and you need organizations like that, basically lobbying for everyone. So I do understand, as a taxpayer in town, I like to remind people that as well, right? Everyone reminds folks of their connection. So I live here, I pay taxes, and I know that my revaluation was definitely significant. I'll just say that. I will also repeat, Mr. Madison, thank God, we're blessed, my wife and I, we're going to pay what we got to pay. I know everyone's not in that situation. I don't take that lightly. I don't want anyone in the community to think so. But I also want folks to understand the business of a town, right? So people always want to say, it's the school, it's the school, it's the school. If your schools didn't exist, your revaluation would be your revaluation, and your taxes are still going to go up. So I know people are going to try to sell that. That's what's going to stir folks up. I understand. That's what we have to do politically, but I want folks to actually take this time over the next month or so to actually learn how the tax breakdown actually works and what impact the school really has. I've lived in a few states, and it's always an argument politically, like, the school's doing it to us. And it's like, not really, not, we're not hitting you for everything, and I want people to learn that and hear that honestly. Ms. Bachelder will speak in a second, but I see the cuts proposed by the Republican Party, and, you know, I have to do what you guys asked me to do. I presented a budget that I felt was fair and considerate. I believe I've done that for four years. I have not been, what I would say, one of those greedy, gouging superintendents. I have also not pleased, it's, I kind of sit in a funny place. One of the comments today on our superintendent's panel is, what's one of the hardest things about being superintendent? And one of my colleagues said to these prospective candidates that you're wrong no matter what decision you make. So every year I've made the decision to come in with a budget. I know I've been fiscally conservative because that's who I am, and I haven't got a lot of love from my Democratic side. Even when I didn't have the job permanently, I had to, you know, sell myself, but they still weren't happy. This year, still present a budget that I believe is fair and is what we need, and folks aren't happy, and I understand that. But it's up to you to make that decision. We will do what we have to do, but I put forth what I believe we needed. I didn't put forth something like a bargaining chip or something to haggle over. This is what it is to run the district. And also I'll add that my children also have gone through this district, and I don't think Windsor sold them short at all, even with the Alliance District moniker. And my last one will graduate in June, even with the Alliance District moniker, and I'm sure she'll be accepted in some lovely colleges. Now, if anyone feels so inclined, you can cash at me so I can pay her tuition, but I believe Windsor has done well by her. My educators in the district, although I continue to push them, they're doing an amazing job. I've said over and over again, our students go off to college, year over, year over, year. I don't care what standardized tests say, I don't care what moniker we have, they don't take remedial classes at colleges, they earn their degrees, they go on to graduate levels, they become doctors, lawyers, and as former Principal Ms. Ford used to say, Indian chiefs. So they do well. Windsor does well by its students, and as a Realtor, no one can find a house in Windsor without waiting a long time or getting into a bidding war. So clearly, people want to be in this town, they want to buy homes here, and they want to live here. And I want to correct one thing on the Hartford, because that's brought up a few times in different places. Hartford is a capital city where I believe just around, if not a little under, 40% of the property is actually taxable, because we, the taxpayers in the state, that's our capital, and most of that property is non-taxable, because folks from all over the state are using those buildings in a non-taxable way. So Hartford is not a fair or realistic comparison at all. And I'll ask Ms. Bachelder to share what she has to share. Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to point out a few items on the Republican revised budget that is not actually a thing. So the reduction of a VP at Windsor High School, per contract, we still have to pay a salary all next year, so that is not a savings of $140,000. And the other, so to cut a teacher at Clover Street and to cut a teacher at JFK, our class sizes will increase to 27 kids in our 3-5 grade band. Thank you.
Okay. I would say, are we ready to vote? And without objection, I'd like to suggest a roll call vote. Without objection.
Mr. President, can you state what we're voting on just clearly?
Voting on the Republican revised budget proposal.
Thank you.
Jill Cantor.
I'm in favor of the Republican revised budget proposal of 3.52%.
It's a yes.
David Fury?
No.
Jeremy Halleck?
Oh, yes.
Anthony King?
No.
Leonard Lockhart?
Nay.
James Madison?
Yes.
Paul Panos?
Yes.
Ayanna Taylor?
No.
Nathan Wallaston? Five no, four yes. It does not pass.
The motion does not pass. Mr. Lockhart, as parliamentarian, do we go to the original?
We're back on the main motion.
Back on the main motion?
Yep.
Mr. Lockhart.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion. I have two substitute motions. My first motion is that we increase Site 81 major maintenance by $277,000, which is 0.34% to bring that line to $850,000.
That's a single motion?
That is a single motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Wallaston. Mr. Lockhart, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just simply, I've been speaking about this line item for well over a decade, and we have consistently used, overused our funds in this line item. They've been exhausted before we can even get to January, February, and I just feel that we just need a little bit more support and relief in that particular line item budget.
Anyone else want to speak to that motion? Seeing none, I'd like to then bring this to a vote, and Ms. Daly, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Jill Cantor?
No.
David Fury?
No.
Jeremy Halleck?
Oh, no.
Anthony King?
Yes.
Leonard Lockhart?
Yes.
James Madison?
No.
Paul Panos?
No.
Ayanna Taylor?
No.
Nathan Wallaston?
Yes.
Three yes, six no, no abstentions, does not pass.
Motion fails. Is there another motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to increase the amount of building subs that we have covering Clover, Paquonic, JFK, and OE by two additional subs each building for a total of eight building subs totaling $263,200, increasing the budget by 0.33%.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Wallaston, adding eight building subs at the elementary schools. Correct, two at each building.
Yes.
Any discussion, Mr. Lockhart?
Yeah, so the reason why I bring this up is because we keep talking about scores, we keep talking about performance, we keep talking about, we have interventionists and specialists and tutors inside the buildings, and too often, these supports are being pulled to cover classrooms or to cover one-to-one paras throughout the day, whether it's for 30 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour, whether it's all morning, whether it's all afternoon, or whether it's all day. So when those supports are not being delivered, and then we look at the test scores, and the test scores are not aligning with the fact that we have building subs in the building, but the fact is, they're not able to do their job because they're busy covering classrooms. So I would like to see a lot more things being spent on in this particular budget, per se, but for this piece, if we just, the attendance issue, it's a problem, and we're not able to deliver. And we have to cover the classrooms, we have to cover the one-to-ones. That's priority number one for us in these buildings, and we need more support in that area, and I know it wasn't asked for, but it's a problem. We know it's a problem, and I would like to address it by adding two additional people in each of the two elementary schools. I know I'm probably in the minority with this, but I just wanted to make sure we put it on the record.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this motion? Mr. Wallaston?
Yeah, I'll just say I appreciate Mr. Lockhart's courageous ask, understanding that, yes, this is a tough year, and, you know, I feel like this is something that would, it wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt the school. Just thinking of the reports we get back and how much we talk about our Tier Two and Tier Three students, I support the work that gets done for those students, so I cannot not support this, you know? And that's not against anybody who decides not to support it. I understand that it's a challenging year, but I still believe that this is something that has to be given a platform. This is something that has to be given room to have an open conversation toward the community and toward the many members of our caucus and the entire board. So yes, I am in support of this motion, and I do believe it would have great benefit. I understand the superintendent did not ask for these things, but this is something that we are asking for in addition to what he's asking for, to help him better do his work, not saying that he doesn't know how to do his job, because I know very well that he does, but we're just hoping to give him this in addition to what he has asked for to help him better do his work. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to this motion? I'll speak to the motion, and I'm very sympathetic to the plights of teachers. I have talked to a number of teachers at different levels about taking on additional classes, a sixth class or something at Windsor, Windsor High, or not enough building subs to where we would want to be. You can't always predict when teachers are going to call out, and this wasn't even within Dr. Hill's 1% ask. So I sympathize with it. In a better world, in a better year, I'd be supporting this, as I would have probably on a major maintenance item that was brought up earlier, because we've seen what's happened when we don't keep our schools up. We have a long-range planning committee looking at every building that we have in the board and seeing what its useful life, does it have to go to be a new school? Do we have to get, buy swing space someplace so we can replace schools? But again, in this atmosphere and where this is, I'm not going to be able to support it. So Ms. Daly, could you do the roll?
Jill Cantor?
No.
David Fury?
No.
Jeremy Halleck?
No.
Anthony King?
Yes.
Leonard Lockhart?
Nay.
James Madison?
No.
Paul Panos?
No.
Ayanna Taylor?
I am voting no, sticking to exactly what Dr. Hill requested. Thank you.
Nathan Wallaston? Three yes, six no, does not pass.
That motion does not pass. I think we are back to the original motion?
Yes, sir.
Main motion?
Yes, sir.
And would you like to speak to it?
Who are you recognizing first?
Oh, the maker of the motion, if she'd like to. If not...
Yes, she's the maker of the motion, so yeah, she goes first.
So back to my original motion, we know how difficult...
Okay, there was a second before, so there doesn't need to be a...
No, 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 no. Thank you.
We know how difficult it is, you know, I've spoken to my caucus, and I'm a single mom with a home in Windsor. I'm scared too, right? I don't know what all of it means. And to Dr. Hill's point, we need to get educated about what all of this means, and I do appreciate that the town council is, you know, hosting different forums and all those things, but I think that we also need to be transparent with our parents and our stakeholders about, you know, what this means. It's a number, it seems very arbitrary, you know. Mr. Lockhart put some things forward that, of course, like I said in the beginning, we would love to see more, but in the times that we are in currently, we have to be more fiscally responsible. And we know the town council may bring, send it back to us and say, that's not going to cut it. It's happened before, as Mr. Panos has mentioned. But when I'm thinking, when our caucus is thinking through what makes sense, um, and what was requested from, you know, Dr. Hill, we have to, to stand behind this book and understand that what's behind this book are people, are children, and this is what he requested, and this is what we're putting forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to else speak to the main motion? Mr. Panos?
These cuts, um, these periods when the taxpayer wakes up have happened not just in the 1990s, it happened in the 2000s, too. And, um, you have to, you go live through it to see what it is to go through four referendums, sometimes taking you right into, uh, I've seen close to August before a referendum passes. And we've had several years with, uh, very low, uh, increases. Now, you have, precisely because, as I pointed out, Windsor has referendums that obviously are not liked by some up here. Windsor is able to capture, um, businesses that pay, that pay taxes and carry the burden. Towns that ignore this, uh, end up with large bureaucracies and ineffective school systems and, um, and they, and without the funding. Now, this may sound counterintuitive, but, uh, I'll just point out here too also that one of the reasons why Hartford has its problems is precisely because it has a high mill rate. And, and a high mill rate translates into people with equipment, companies with equipment abandoning you and leaving you without, there's, there's a term for this. I think it's called disintermediation. And it, it occurred for decades to the point where it really is a bankrupt system. It is, it's facing down a 50, $50 million cut. And this wasn't, this is, you know, it is gonna go through a lot of, uh, problems, and that's even without a revow. But I, I point out, the, the best way to, to do this is to handle the problems, to figure out what it is that we can do to improve the efficiency here. So I would urge you, um, to reject this. And these are the reasons why, well, I think we know how the vote is gonna go. But, um, I, uh, haven't been through this more than once. Um, I think that the prudent thing to do is, uh, to reject this particular increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak, Mr. Mr. Lockhart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the superintendent's budget as presented. As we know, he proposes the budget. Once he presents it to the board, it becomes the board's budget. So we understand that the superintendent, um, will give us what he feel he needs, and, and that is appropriate. I'm also of the belief that as a Board of Education, we have a right to, if we would like to see more or less, I believe we have the autonomy to do so. Just like if we send this to a referendum, and if, if the electorate would like to see more or less, they have the right to reject this said budget. I'm of the, of the opinion this budget does not go far enough. I'm of, I, I was prepared to go 1% higher, I was prepared to go 2% higher. But to Mr. Madison's point, we don't want to be here all night. We already know what's gonna happen, I know it's gonna be rejected. Um, I got my two main points across. At the end of the day, we want, we knew the fiscal cliff was coming. It just happened to coincide at a bad time, which is re-eval. We just, we all underst- we knew this was coming. This, this is, this is a very difficult time. Technically, if, you know, if the budget is not robust enough, or it's too much, you should reject it. I came into this meeting not knowing if I was gonna vote for this budget or not. My caucus knew that this budget wasn't going far enough, and, uh, I was not supportive of it. They knew that going in. But I, I also know the damage that will cause if I don't vote for this budget and the slide that would happen. Am I realistic in understanding that this budget could easily go right to the, to the, to the citizens and get rejected, and it comes back to us? I do. But I do understand that the nine of us, I, I do believe we take our role on this Board of Education very, very seriously. And I truly believe that we are trying to do what's right for the, first and foremost, for the kids of this district, and to make sure we have the right pieces in place within our buildings to get the jobs done with the understanding that we have to lean upon other taxing authorities to help fund it, whether it's local, whether it's state, or whether it's federal. One of the things that's going to gangster us is that the fact that a lot of things have been not fully funded for years, and we continue to suffer from that, but yet we persist. We understand that for quality, quality costs. We understand that we have human capital that are doing the things that we would like them to do. We understand that we're asking people to do a lot more with a lot less. We understand that we have kids right now that if we lay off more people, or don't, excuse me, if we don't budget for people, we got kids that may not get the services that they should be getting, even if it's not mandated by the law, I, for example, at IEP or special education. But if there's a Tier Two person that needs that support and just need a little to get over the top, and then put them back into the classroom, back in the Tier One environment, those people are doing other things to try to cover what's going on. So this is not an effort issue by the staff or anybody under Dr. Hill's leadership. I, I refuse to believe that it is an, um, an effort issue. What it is, is that we just don't have enough to deal with the deluge of all the impacts of public education, the unfunded mandates, the stuff teachers and administrators have to do on a daily basis to make this go. And that's the problem. And as a Board of Ed member, I believe all nine of us are taking that into serious consideration. I truly believe that we will disagree on policies, we may agree on some things, but I truly believe we're all bringing a unique perspective with the understanding that we are responsible for every single child in the town of Windsor to make sure that we provide a high-quality public education and that we have the appropriate employees in place to make sure that we deliver. This is a very difficult year. I don't want to see anyone cut. I don't want to see not one soul cut. If anybody, if anything, I wish more people were coming in to help support these kids, to help get us over where we need to be. Sadly, we're not there, and we can't do it. So for me personally, that pains me. As a taxpayer in this town, I pay taxes just like everybody else. I do understand the pain. I do. But I also understand that I have a responsibility for these kids. These kids are my responsibility. Um, respectfully, I'm not on the town council, respectfully, I'm not on any other taxing agency. All I can do is go lobby and advocate to those that provide us with the funding. So I understand my role. But from this dais, I'm gonna continue to advocate for the kids like the, the other eight of us are doing up on this dais. I am not in full support of this 6-4. I will vote for the 6-4. But at the end of the day, when we say we're gonna wait a year, let's wait another two years, let's wait another three years, we know what that, just to Mr. Madison's point, we know what that story looks like. Tomorrow's not coming, next year's not coming, the following year's not coming. It's not coming. So we need to have realistic conversations. We need to make sure that we are engaging the state, the federal, and any entity that we can to make sure that any relief from any policies, rags, or anything of that nature that is thumbing down on the fiscal ability of this town to be able to educate our kids, that's one of the pieces that I'm gonna be driving as a board member on this board. Because that's what's choking us down right now, at the end of the day. And it's, it's the kids that suffer. We can't afford to go another class where our kids are suffering. If we look at some of these things, if we dug into the numbers and see where specialists are being pulled out of their classroom to cover kids, and then those services not being delivered, I'm sure if we looked at those numbers, they would be staggering. They'll be staggering. But I guess that's a conversation for another time. Because we're worried about the dollars and cents of a re-eval. And I understand, but I need us to all understand that we all have a responsibility to every single child within the town of Windsor to make sure we give them the best education possible. And I just want to thank all eight of you that participated in this process and that you gave your all and you wore your lunch on your sleeves to show exactly how you feel and the direction we should go as a town. So I truly appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak regarding the motion? I, I will speak to it, that I'm going to support this. And, uh, it was the superintendent's proposed budget, and I, I agree that once it hits our, our desk, it's, it's, it's our budget. But I'm not an educator. And we pay somebody pretty good money to be the lead educator here. And this is his professional opinion of what we do need to move our district forward, to keep maintaining what we have. To me, this is a maintenance budget. There's nothing sexy in this budget. "Oh, we're gonna add this," or "we're gonna add that." We have some extraordinary increases that we can't control, including utility costs, um, insurance costs, a busing contract that we, we knew this next hit was coming at the same time we've been unhappy with our busing contractor. So, uh, again, back at the legislature. We hear the same from many other districts. We have the IDEA Act. It was a wonderful act that was passed by Congress to support students with special needs, Individual with Disabilities Act. And it was supposed to be funded by the federal government at 40%. I think it's something like 13% that they spend. Then the state of Connecticut said, "Okay, you spend four and a half times what it, what it costs to educate a student, and we'll make up the difference at the back end." Well, they don't. They, they don't budget for it, so they, they give us somewhere between 70 to 80%. And this excess cost has been a thorn in every, every district. It's one thing that, one thing that unites all the district, rich and poor, urban, suburban, uh, rural, is this excess cost. But we have, it's, it's a requirement we have. We have a legal and moral requirement and responsibility regarding special education. But those are the things you can't fight when you don't have the collective nature of this. Um, again, back at the legislature, I, I'm seeing more collaboration, but not hopefully having the rest, including Krec, be fighting against other public schools. I see early childhood, instead of saying, again, I mentioned it before, instead of saying, "No, we'll take that extra money Governor wants to give us, but they're taking it from K to 12, we're not gonna take it. We don't want to take that." And the ability for, for Boards of Education to be united in this and make sure, again, at the press conference that, that Representative Curry held, CEA was also there speaking articulately about the need, uh, to support our schools. So I'm, uh, I, I agree, I wish I could move this budget forward, and maybe it was a better year financially with revow. Um, I, I would have been supporting, uh, the earlier amendments. So at this point, Ms. Daly, can you call the roll?
Jill Kanter?
No, I can't support the 6.4% increase.
David Fury?
Yes.
Jeremy Halleck?
Uh, no.
Anthony King?
Yes.
Leonard Lockhart?
Yes.
James Madison?
No.
Paul Panos?
No.
Ayana Taylor?
Yes.
Nathan Wooliston?
Yes.
Five yes. Four no, passes.
Let the record reflect, the 6.4% increase based on Dr. Hill's proposed budget has been approved. I'm gonna go back to the agenda. I think the next part was, uh, school liaison reports, and if we could try to keep it brief based on the hour, but I know you, uh, people are, have been representing your school, so... First Windsor High School? Ms. Taylor?
Uh, thank you, President Fury. Um, I'll keep it brief, uh, as our, um, our new representative from, uh, Windsor High School shared a lot of the things that I would have shared. I, uh, will say that, um, the, the girls', uh, basketball, uh, the state tournament will start next Tuesday, um, and it will be a home game at Windsor High School. Um, congratulating all the students that I witnessed, uh, on, you know, Commitment Day and, and signing, doing amazing things. Um, that's great. And, um, shouting out all of the students that just, uh, made the, the honor roll. That is it.
Thank you. Mr. Wooliston?
Uh, I have nothing to report, thank you.
Any questions for Windsor High School? Sage Park, Mr. King, and then Mr. Panos?
Just a couple of real quick things. Just a shout out to the math challenge team, they won first and second place out of 107 Connecticut middle schools, um, in the stock market game, which if you ever played that, if you remember, that is awesome. And I think that's like really sweet. Take that Alliance District, you know what I mean? The, uh, girls' basketball and boys' basketball team both won, uh, invitational tournaments, which was great. There's some really great trophies to check out if you're there. Uh, the girls' basketball team will be playing in the CRAL championship on Thursday, the 22nd. Um, and then just finally, another shout out, 'cause I'm gonna keep doing this, on the PTO meetings, there's one on March 13th, um, in the Sage Park library.
Thank you. Mr. Panos?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Any questions regarding Sage Park? Clover Street? I'm used to looking at Mr. Lockhart, but I look at Mr. Madison.
Uh, yeah, Clover had, uh, the, uh, National African-American Read-In where 23 adults came. Uh, they were all men. I'd like to say I love that. Um, because I think men need to be present in children's lives, and we know that women participate overwhelmingly in education, but I really appreciate this town having, uh, the watchdogs and also very active men for the African-American Read-In. Um, and also, the, that was covered by the news, as I understand it, as was the, uh, recognition by the Humane Society of several kids for their pet adoption work. Um, so, great work at Clover. I just also want to put in a plug for the National Junior Honor Society. My son was, uh, inducted into that. Um, it was a great ceremony. I love meritocracy, so it was, uh, great to attend. And I'm even prouder of the fact that his girlfriend was inducted as well, because, you know, I can beat my kid up, but the fact that he selects a good girlfriend is, is really key. So, uh, great ceremony run very concisely, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Clover? JFK, Ms. Kanter?
Thank you.
There was a question.
Sorry, Ms. Wooliston.
I was just gonna say congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for clearing that up.
He had a double congratulations. Um, so for JFK, they had their winter concert for band and orchestra. It was held on Thursday, February 8th, and they always do an outstanding job in their performance. The Apex fundraiser's going well. Um, they're still focusing on the theme for compassion. Some students wrote valentines to, uh, the VA, and I delivered them to the hospital. They have fun Friday one time a month. Is something wrong? Okay. Okay. I didn't know. I usually do, and I miss your cue sometimes. Um, the fifth grade students are being introduced to Sage Park for tours for an easy transition when they graduate. Um, there's a math club for students who signed up. It's on Thursdays, and it's going well. The school store is operational still, which is great, and their students are earning eagle tickets, they're celebrating Black History Month with an assembly this Thursday, tomorrow, from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. There's a field trip to the Bushnell on February 26th. They're gonna see a bilingual adaption of the fairy tale for Cinderella. And the K Kids is doing a cannon bottle drive, and they're supporting the Monkeys Backpack Animal Rescue. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for JFK? Oliver Ellsworth, Mr. Lockhart? Any questions for Mr. Lockhart with no, having no report? Paquonic School?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, um, our last month, Paquonic had their first ever Paquonic, um, under the Northern Lights Dance, it was a huge, uh, success. Um, there's, um, there's, uh, pictures posted on the PTO, uh, website. If anyone's interested, but the, all the kids had a great time. I attended the, the February, the February 5th, uh, PTO I attended the, the February, the February fifth, uh, PTO meeting, um, and I got to, um, to have, um, you know, discussions with the PTO as well, as some parents that were there afterwards, so that was a great event as well. We definitely had some good discussions. Paquonic's PTO's next meeting is on March fourth, from six to seven PM. Their month, their monthly school assembly is gonna be coming up on March eighth, um, and the Windsor High School band will, will be playing in the gym. Um, and then finally, uh, chronic absenteeism is down from this time of last year, it was at nineteen percent last year, and, and it's down to a thirteen percent this year, so we're making strides there as well. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Paquonic? And next item is committee reports, are there any looking towards my right, any committee reports looking at the chairs? Okay. Other matters, announcements, regular board meetings? The next Board of Education regular meeting is Tuesday, March nineteenth, seven PM, in this LPW boardroom. Next item is audience to visitor, Ms. Daly.
Good evening, this is Robyn Daly from the superintendent's office. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speaker phone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own, and no comments will be made by the board at this time.
Okay, again, as I mentioned earlier, audience to visitor, at the two and a half minute mark, uh, Ms. Taylor will raise the red card briefly, and at three, she'll raise it again, and I'll continue to hold it up, and please, at that point, wind up your remarks. Uh, anybody at this point in the boardroom would like to address the board? Looking at Mr. Porcaro, but I don't, he's not tracing over to the, to the dais over there. Um, at, uh, anybody online or on the phone?
There are attendees, but no one has their hand raised, and there are no comments in the Q and A.
Okay, um, at this point, I'm looking for one more motion.
That means we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos, to adjourn. Any discussion, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries nine zero zero, we are outta here at nine fifty-nine.